Call this November 10th regular session order. Need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Mr. Tool?
Second.
Mr. Hammack, all in favor? Passes four zero. Also need a motion to approve the minutes from the October 20th regular session.
So moved.
Mr. Hammond?
Second.
Mr. Hammack, all in favor? Passes four zero. Recognitions, Mr. Cawker.
Thank you, Mr. Ranson. Good evening, Board members and Dr. Butler. We have several recognitions this evening, so I would ask that you come forward. As you do so, I'll point out that our artwork this month is from the fine students at Dove Creek Elementary. Their art teacher is Karen Phillips. And we thank them for sharing these talented pieces with us. They will be on display in the hallway throughout the month. First this evening, board will recognize North Oconee's FFA medalists for their efforts at the Georgia National Fair. Estella Sanders, Kinsley Mann, and Scarlett Harris, Reserve Grand Champion County Group Market Goats. Lena Steinkamp, Hazel Brubaker, Brady Smith, and Haley Parsons, Grand Champion County Group Market Lambs. Christopher Butler, third place, ninth grade Market Lamb Showman. Molly Bell, Reserve Grand Champion Floral Design. And Avery Benis, third place Floral Design. Their advisor is Tim Griffith. All right, congratulations. Next aboard will recognize the Malcolm Bridge Middle FFA students and their Georgia National Fair performances. Sidney Spradlin and Sloan Gexy, Grand Champion Floral Design. Caitlin Kramer and Chandler Teeman, Reserve Grand Champion Agro Science Fair. Madeha Arif, Grand Champion Landscap Plan Drawing. And Asher Grace Bailey and Nora Brubaker, Reserve Grand Champion County Group Market Goats. Their advisor is Emily Kurson. Next this evening, the board will induct the newest member in the Oconee County Schools Hall of Fame. Former teacher and board member, Kim Argo. Ms. Argo most recently spent 16 years on the Board of Education, the longest service in district history, including nine years as the Board Chair. She led Oconee County to GSBA Governance Team of the Year honors in 2020 and helped pilot the board as the district grew by more than 2,100 students during her tenure. In addition, Ms. Argo was a tremendous elementary school teacher for Oconee County for 18 years. She started her career in 1983 at Oconee County Intermediate School, which is now Colton Ferry Elementary. She also taught at Oconee Elementary and ultimately returned to Colton Ferry. Ladies and gentlemen, the 39th member of the OCS Hall of Fame, Kim Argo. And that concludes recognitions.
Next we have Points of Pride with Dove Creek Elementary. Welcome, Ms. Stanishevsky, Dr. San.
Good evening, Dr. Butler and Board members. It is always an honor to be here with you all to share our Dove Creek Points of Pride. Over the past several years, you've heard many of our Points of Pride. From our top-tier positive school culture and high student engagement, to our Rock Your School events, thematic learning opportunities, and more than 20 student club offerings that make Dove Creek a vibrant place to learn. You've also experienced firsthand our PBIS distinguished systems and even join in on the fun when you were sorted into our third through fifth housing system last year, which promotes student leadership, teamwork, and positivity. This year, we are especially thrilled to highlight one of the heartbeats of our school, our culture of inclusivity. Tonight, we will shine a spotlight on our Teacher of the Year, Ms. Laura Golda. Ms. Laura serves as our Special Education Adapted Curriculum Teacher, where she and her two incredible pair of professionals, Ms. Karen and Ms. Beth, pour their hearts into serving eight amazing students. Ms. Laura's classroom beautifully represents our school mission, every dragon, every day. A belief that every student deserves to be seen, valued, and included in all aspects of our school community. We are so proud to share how the work of these ladies embodies the spirit of Dove Creek Elementary and what makes our school such a special place to learn and grow. These ladies are dedicated professionals, both inside and outside of the classroom. They work tirelessly to ensure all students are provided enriched learning opportunities. Beyond their classroom dedication, I'm proud to share that Ms. Beth and Ms. Karen, along with another Dove Creek second grade teacher, Ms. Perez, raised over $3,000 for extra special people. This August, they participated in the ESP Big Jump, literally jumping out of an airplane to fundraise for this local nonprofit that supports students with disabilities in our community. Their commitment, both in the classroom and in our broader community, truly embodies the spirit of inclusivity at Dove Creek Elementary School. At this time, I'm honored to introduce to you our Dove Creek Teacher of the Year, Ms. Laura Golda, and her amazing team to share with you about their classroom.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having us tonight. I brought several of our close friends from our class. I brought Hannah Cisco, Lachlan McFarland, Ethan Davidson, and then some of our fifth grade and eighth grade buddies that support our class as well. Our students are a huge part of Dove Creek and we enjoy letting them be a part of as many projects and parts of our day as we can. Every classroom at Dove Creek starts their day with morning meeting. Morning meeting is a time where students greet each other, they share about different interests that they have, they share about their favorite things. I'm gonna let Hannah Cisco tell you a little bit about morning meeting.
I love morning meeting with my friends. I love telling, I love saying.
Tell my friends.
I love telling my friends about my favorite things.
All right. So, morning meeting is how we start every day, but we've also created some programs for our students so that they can be showcased and their abilities can be showcased throughout our school. One of those is Brew Crew. We created a coffee cart for our students to have a purpose of... They work on academic skills as well as communication and social skills. So they take coffee orders, they fill coffee orders, and then they use those communication skills to deliver the coffee and collect the money that we earn through our coffee cart. So it is just a great way for our students to be in the building. They're greeting other teachers, they're learning other students. And it is just really fun. Our staff and our... All of the people at our school just really embrace it and it's just a fun. It's on Fridays usually twice a month, just a fun way for our students to get to be a part of our school community. We also love to share in what our third through fifth graders are doing. So we have two students, Ethan and Lachlan, who have joined our house meetings. And they sort it into a house and then each participate with their grade levels in house meetings so that they are a part of that community as well. We brought through two of our eighth grade adaptive PE buddies. We walk over to Dove Creek Middle School twice a week to participate in adaptive PE and that gives our students time to work on those communication skills again, but also those big gross motor skills where they're working on PE skills. And two of our eighth graders, Laura Stevens and Sarah Beth, are with us. And they are our buddies and they help us to be a part of that community and be a part of that class and really support our students so that they feel, without me having to do a lot of guiding, they feel like they can experience that and be a part of what is happening, both physically and socially, which is a great part of our day. Activity, all of our students also participate in PE Art and Music at Dove Creek Elementary. And we have some amazing activity teachers who immerse our students in all of the fine arts and the physical education that they can possibly take. And it is fantastic. We are very fortunate and our students love, as you can see from the pictures, just love being a part of that. We are super grateful for those teachers. So every year, we have a celebration on March 21st for World Down Syndrome Day. We have two students in our classroom that are extra special to us on that day and we love to celebrate them. Lachlan McFarland's gonna tell you just a little bit about it.
Yeah, okay.
Good job, girlie. And then another thing that we do that is just a special activity for our students is our Hero Club. It was created with our fifth graders in mind so that they can learn from students of all abilities. And it creates a partnership. We brought three of our Hero Club friends with us today. Betsy Willow and Olivia are here with us, probably wearing their Hero Club t-shirts. But it allows our students to really learn from each other. We do an activity every month and our fifth graders are learning from the students in our classroom and our classroom is learning from our fifth graders as well. One of our own fifth graders is gonna come tell you a little bit about Hero Club. This is Ethan Davidson and he wanted to share about Hero Club.
We love Hero Club. We do fun things with our fifth grade friends.
This is a little synopsis of everything great about Ms. Laura's class. So, go ahead.
So, at Dove Creek, we are like a puzzle. Every heart, every mind, and every hand fits together to create something beautiful. We couldn't do that without the support of our Board of Education. Like all of you, to show our appreciation, our students would like to share a small token of thanks, a cookie baked with the same care and love that fills our halls each day.
May we come forward with our cookies?
Mr. Ranson, with your permission, I'm pleased to announce our Pursuit of Excellence Award winner has arrived. So we'd like to recognize him. The November Pursuit of Excellence Award winner is custodian Johnny Pope of Dove Creek Middle. He will receive a $50 Visa gift card, fleece blanket, stainless steel mug, and tote from Peach State Federal Credit Union. Chops and Hops and Rosie's Hometown Meats provided additional gift cards, while Oconee County Schools presented a commemorative plaque. These are some words in Mr. Johnny's nomination form. "Mr. Johnny is outstanding at not only keeping our school clean and healthy, he checks on the employees on a regular basis. Asking how we are doing, asking about our families, remembering to follow up to see how things are. Mr. Johnny consistently brings joy, passion, and humor to each situation and each person he encounters. You always leave the conversation with Mr. Johnny feeling cared for." "Mr. Johnny is always in the background, he always has a smile on his face, yet all the while doing his job with a quiet, humble spirit. If you were to ask Mr. Johnny what his main role is, he would say it's to take care of the staff so that we can take care of the kids. We cherish Mr. Johnny and we are so blessed to have him on our staff and to be able to call him a friend and colleague." The November Pursuit of Excellence winner, Johnny Pope. Next we have superintendent's report, Dr. Butler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Over these past few weeks, I've enjoyed visiting our schools, getting to know our students and our staff, and seeing firsthand the incredible work happening across the district. As a part of my 90-day entry plan, I'm continuing to listen, learn, and engage with our school community. I do want to note that we are preparing for an important transition within our leadership team. Dr. Deborah Harden will officially return to retirement on November 21st. Dr. Harden's leadership and dedication have made a lasting impact on Oconee County Schools, not only in the past few months, but throughout her long history with this district. She served as superintendent from 1993 to 1999, stepped in again this summer as interim superintendent, and has continued providing guidance and stability in her most recent role as Associate Superintendent. She has also spent many years mentoring our Oconee County principals and leaders, as well as countless other leaders throughout the state of Georgia. On a personal note, I have been deeply privileged to learn from Dr. Harden and I will forever be grateful for my time working alongside her. I know many others across Oconee County feel the same way. Her influence and care have touched countless people in this community and words really can't express how thankful we are for her service and her heart for Oconee County Schools. We all owe her a debt of gratitude. A reception is planned next week to celebrate Dr. Harden and to thank her for all she's done for Oconee County Schools, our community, and most importantly, our children.
And I would like to echo Dr. Butler's words. It is very awesome of you to come work with us and your willingness to serve and your servant's heart and leading us through a transition time. And because of your hard work and dedication, your leadership and experience, getting us through the transition and through East Ploughs, we're very thankful and thank you very much. We owe you a debt of gratitude.
We have also some wonderful news to share. Oconee County voters overwhelmingly approve the continuation of East Ploughs. We're so thankful for this community's continued trust and support. East Ploughs provides vital funding for our facilities, technology, transportation, and the maintenance of our existing school campuses. This renewal secures an ongoing investment in our students' learning environments and in the future of our school system. So thank you, Oconee County. Tomorrow, our schools will host special events to honor and celebrate our nation's heroes for Veterans Day. These are such meaningful opportunities for our students to learn about service and sacrifice and to express appreciation to those who have served. We extend our deepest thanks to our veterans and their families for their courage and commitment to our country. One of our favorite district traditions is also right around the corner, our school Thanksgiving feasts. These events are a wonderful way to bring families in our community together. Last year, more than 7,000 meals were served across the district and we expect another great turnout this year. Finally, I'd like to celebrate some outstanding athletic accomplishments. Congratulations to the Oconee County High School Boys Cross Country Team for winning the state championship this past weekend. The Oconee County Girls Cross Country Team finished as the 3A state runner-up. And Oconee County Middle School also brought home state titles in Boys Varsity, Boys JV, and Girls Varsity Cross Country. The North Oconee High School Cheer Competition Team won the 4A region championship. And both of our high school football teams are headed into the state playoffs this Friday as winter sports are beginning this week. It's an exciting time to be both a Titans and a Warrior fan. That will conclude the November Superintendent's Report unless there are questions.
Next we have presentations and discussions, teaching and learning report, Ms. Whitaker.
Good evening, Dr. Butler and Board. The November 25th Teaching and Learning Report contains two items of information and no action items. The first item of information highlights the 2025 ACT results. The opening chart shows that Oconee County Schools achieved a 24.2 ACT composite score, well above the state average of 21.4 and the national average of 19.4. The second chart reflects participation data with 187 test takers from the class of 2025. The final chart ranks the top 10 districts in Georgia, where Oconee County Schools placed fourth statewide and was the only county system in northeast Georgia to earn a top 10 ranking. These results reflect the collective dedication of our teachers, leaders, and support staff K-12. Their commitment to continuous improvement and high expectations ensure that our students are well-prepared for success beyond high school. The second item of information is our REACH Scholarship. Four eighth grade students recently participated in a REACH Signing Day ceremony, officially becoming Georgia REACH Scholars for the class of 2030. The REACH Georgia Program is a needs-based scholarship that requires students to participate in an interview, sign a contract, maintain a specific grade point average, meet regularly with both an academic coach and a mentor, and graduate from both high school and college. Each of these students will receive $10,000 in scholarship money upon graduating from high school to attend a Georgia HOPE-eligible post-secondary institution. REACH is a public and private partnership and requires the support of local businesses. We would like to thank Athens Ford, Bank South, Georgia Home Partners Realty, Peach State Credit Union, Oconee State Bank, and Peach State Federal Credit Union for their generous donation. These partners have donated $4,000 annually to make these scholarships possible. Congratulations to our four student scholarship recipients. Alex Evans and Addie Hanley of Dove Creek Middle, Isaac Allen of Malcolm Bridge Middle, and Britton Elder of Oconee Middle. That concludes the Teaching and Learning Report unless there are any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Whitaker. Student Services, Dr. Yancy.
Good evening, Dr. Butler and Board members. The November 2025 Student Services Report contains four items of information and two action items. The first item of information is a school choice timeline for the 26-27 school year. for the 26-27 school year. Applications for School Choice will open this Friday at 4:00 p.m. and close Friday, January 9, 2026, at 4:00 p.m. Decision letters will be mailed the following Friday, January 16, 2026. Families can access the application through a Google Form link available on the district website and shared through the district's social media accounts. Again, this year, all 12 schools are open for School Choice. The second item of information is our annual participation in the Georgia Department of Education's School Climate Survey System. These surveys measure the overall quality of school life by capturing the experiences of students and adults in areas such as academics, relationships, safety, and learning environment. The surveys will be conducted with four stakeholder groups, students, teachers, staff, and families. The Parent and Guardian Survey will open on December 1 and close on March 31. Teacher and Staff Surveys will be administered in January, and Student Surveys will begin in February. Parents and Guardians will receive additional information about the Family Survey in December and details about the Student Survey in January. The third item of information is the Behavior Threat Assessment and Management, known as BTAM, training held last month. This training was conducted by the Georgia Emergency Management and Homeland Security Agency, GMA, and Homeland Security, and included participation from our principals, assistant principals, counselors, social workers, SROs, and district staff. The session focused on equipping school leaders and support staff with the knowledge and tools needed to identify, assess, and manage potential behavioral threats within the K-12 setting. The training emphasized proactive strategies for early intervention, collaboration among school teams, and ensuring the safety and well-being of all students and staff. The fourth item of information is an update on our School Resource Officer Program. As of today, three additional deputies have joined the program and have been assigned to elementary schools within our district. The new deputies in school assignments are as follows. Deputy Humphries has been assigned to Dove Creek Elementary School. Deputy Cherry has been assigned to Rocky Branch Elementary School. And Deputy Gentry has been assigned to Malcolm Bridge Elementary School. With these additions, the total number of deputies in our SRO program has increased to 11. Our goal continues to have a SRO in each of our 12 schools, and I want to say a thank you to Sheriff Hale and Captain Mark Smith for their continued efforts to recruit and fulfill these positions within our program. Student Services has two action items for tonight's regular board meeting. The first action item is an out-of-state field trip for Dove Creek Middle School's band and chorus programs to travel to Carolins, North Carolina in March. And the second action item is an out-of-state field trip for Oconee County Middle School's band program to travel to Carolins, North Carolina in May. The superintendent recommends approving these field trips as presented, and this concludes the Student Services Report, unless there are any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Yancy.
Yes, sir.
Technology, Mr. McCullers.
Good evening, Board members and Dr. Butler. Oconee County Schools Technology Services Report includes two informational items and two action items for the November 10th regular session. Information Item Number One, Chromebook Computers. VirtuCom has secured a state contract with the Georgia Department of Administrative Services to supply and service end-using computing, including Chromebooks and laptops. Under this state contract, Oconee County Schools plans to purchase 1,165 HP Forest G10 Chromebook computers and 60 HP ProBook 440G11 laptop computers as a part of this year's replacement cycle for student and teacher devices. Superintendent's recommendation is for the Board of Education to approve VirtuCom with a bid of $452,020 for 1,165 Chromebooks at the December 8th regular session meeting. This project will be paid for using EastBloss and general fund dollars. Information Item Number Two is the Laptop Computers, and the superintendent would also like to recommend that the Board of Education approve VirtuCom with a bid of $49,620 for the purchase of 60 laptop computers at the December 8th regular session meeting. This project will also be funded through EastBloss and general fund dollars. Action Item Number One for tonight's meeting, Board Policy, JCDAF, Use of Electronic Devices by Students. The revisions to Board Policy, JCDAF, Use of Electronic Devices by Students, also known as the Distraction-Free Education Act of 2025, were placed on the table for public comment in October, and no comments were received. Board members, I want to remind you that the purpose of this policy is to ensure that Oconee County Schools continues its commitment to fostering a focused and distraction-free learning environment for students. We believe that academic achievement and student well-being are best supported in classrooms where personal electronic devices do not interfere with instruction, social interaction, or student engagement. The goal is to minimize distractions, improve academic outcomes, increase meaningful interactions, and focus in learning experiences. Superintendent's recommendation is to remove Board Policy, JCDAF, Use of Electronic Devices by Students, from the table and approve it as presented. Our last action item for tonight is the Technology Surplus. The Division of Technology Services conducts an inventory analysis at two key points during the school year. The Division has finished the first surplus list for the semester based on our replacement cycle. The superintendent's recommendation is for the Board of Education to approve the Technology Surplus List as presented and simply. That concludes the Technology Services Report. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have. Thank you.
Next, we have Human Resources, Mr. Kofor.
Good evening, Board members and Dr. Butler. Human Resources Report this evening contains two items of information and one action item for the December 8th Board of Education meeting. Our first item of information is an update on our open enrollment process. This year's open enrollment cycle was one of the strongest in recent memory. Our new benefits broker provided exceptional service throughout the process, bringing multiple enrollers to every site in the district. 763 onsite enrollment meetings were held across the district, ensuring staff had direct access to support and guidance as they made these important decisions. 981 of our employees actively participated in their enrollment process, representing the largest active enrollment in Oconee County history. These numbers reflect both the effectiveness of our new broker partnership and the district's continued emphasis on employee support and communication. Our second item of information is a YAS implementation update. At our request, YAS has implemented several improvements to strengthen the substitute workflow and give us greater control over how our substitute jobs are released and managed. They have updated the substitute management page for our subs so that it now cleanly separates out available jobs and your jobs so the subs can see what work is available. Expanded filtering options help substitutes quickly find assignments that fit their availability and preferences. They can also now cancel recently-accepted jobs, returning them to the available pool for other subs to pick up, as well as mark jobs not interested to ensure there's no clutter as they look through the available positions. YAS continues to develop the substitute app that will later roll out this month, and we will soon begin the next phase of our transition, which will be to move our hiring processes and job postings from frontline to YAS. Our action item for this evening is the 2027-2028 Academic Calendar. Last year, we received clear and overwhelming support for the Fall Break Model, and that input serves the guiding compass for this year's work. With support exceeding 70% for the Fall Break option, the preference was unmistakable. For the 27-28 school year, we use that data and the community's collective voice to shape a calendar model that mirrors the Fall Break version approved for the 26-27 school year. The proposed calendar maintains the same structure, including the week-long Fall Break and an end date prior to Memorial Day. At this time, it is the superintendent's recommendation that the Board approve placing the proposed 27-28 school calendar on the table for public review and comment. This concludes the Human Resources Report this evening, unless there are any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kofor. Next, we have Business Services, Mr. Adams.
Good evening, Board members and Dr. Butler. The Business Service Report for November 10th contains six items of information and one action item for tonight's board meeting. Our first item of information is our October Cash Balances Report. As of October 31st, the closing cash balance reflects a 1.32% decrease compared to the previous month. Despite this month-over-month decrease, our cash balances for October remain strong, and we are still well-positioned to meet our financial obligations for the rest of the fiscal year. Our second item of information is a list of all vendor payments in October. We paid 481 vendors $1.67 million for the month. The third item of information is the Budget Report for October. Revenue and collections for the month were at 22.3%. Expenditures, which would typically be expected to be at 33%, are currently at 36.4%. But I'd like to highlight that the higher percentage includes encumbrances of $2.85 million, or about 2.4% for the fiscal year. Without these encumbrances, expenditures will be more aligned with our monthly expenditures, and we will continue to monitor these figures closely as we move forward throughout the fiscal year. The fourth item of information is the EastBloss Collections Report. We had an increase of 0.28% in collections over last month and a 5.99% increase over this time last year. The fifth item of information is our EastBloss Six Report. Revenues and expenditures have been updated through the end of October. Our last item of information provides an update on the federal funding allocation and expenditures for the month of October. These funds are reimbursement-based, and we will see these funds continually paid out to us throughout the fiscal year. We still do not anticipate any reimbursement delays with the federal government shutdown, but we will continue to monitor any communication we get from the Georgia Department of Education on this matter. Our action item for tonight is a resolution of the Oconee County Board of Education declaring the results of the election held on November 4, 2025, and for other related purposes. This resolution formally declares the results of the special election held on November 4, 2025, and authorizes the appropriate certification and filing in accordance with state law. I ask the superintendent to recommend the Board approve and certify the resolution of the Oconee County Board of Education declaring the results of the election held on November 4, 2025, and other related purposes. That concludes my report, unless the Board has any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Adams.
Thank you.
Operations, Dr. White.
Good evening, Board members and Dr. Butler. Operations has three items of information for this evening and one action item for this month's regular session. The first informational item for Operations is an update on our Energy Report. Our kilowatt usage per day for 1,000 square feet has been updated for the month of September. The second informational item is our Transportation Update. For the previous month, we had 39 field trips, 57 athletic trips, 31 special education trips, 189 buses deployed, for a total of 12,847 miles. Our third item of information is an update on school nutrition participation for the month of October. Board members, you'll see that we saw a decrease in participation for breakfast of 0.22% and a lunch participation of 0.93% as compared to October of 2024. Our action item is a new camera system for school buses. This project was introduced in last month's work session. The superintendent's recommendations for the Board of Education to approve the purchase of a new camera system from Rush Truck Centers for a proposal cost of $191,188.60 at this evening's regular board session. This project will be paid for using EastBloss and general fund dollars. This concludes the Operations Report, unless there are any questions.
Thank you, Dr. White. Facilities, Mr. Richardson.
Good evening. The Oconee County Schools Operations and Facilities, October 6, 2025 Board of Education Report contains two items of information and no action items. First item of information is the Lead Custodian Meeting. The October Lead Custodian Meeting was held on Thursday, October 9, and was hosted by the team at Collin Ferry Elementary School. The team discussed head lice prevention, proper storage in utility rooms, and extension cord care. Our custodial teams are to be commended for their rigorous work ensuring that our schools are clean for health. Second item of information is our Construction Update. The district-wide generator project. Again, all generators are installed and operational. The contractor continues to install the monitoring system. This system will ensure that we are notified if the generator has an issue. The work should be completed within the next month. Transportation Office, design work continues to make steady progress. For the new transportation offices. And finally, the North Oconee Stormwater Pipe. The contractor has replaced the pipe and will complete the final grading this week. And that concludes the Facilities Report, unless there are any questions.
Communications, Mr. Calkwall.
Thank you, Mr. Ransome. Good evening, Board members and Dr. Butler. Communications Report this evening has two items of information. First item is October Social Media Information. Oconee County Schools had 49 social media posts in October with an average of 22,050 views. The top post of the month was the coverage of Victory Day at Oconee County High School. That post was viewed more than 185,000 times. Let me repeat that, 185,000 times. Special thanks to everyone who organized, supported, and participated in Victory Day. For the month, 29 posts were viewed more than 10,000 times, including Victory Day, followed by one at 90,000, two at 70,000, one at 40,000, and three at 30,000. The top 10 posts for the month had a great deal of variety, including Victory Day, Homecoming for both schools, the Deputy Gilstrap Remembrance, and the announcement of the 2026 graduation dates. The bulk of the EastBloss campaign also took place in October with an overall average of 10,400 views for the 12 school-specific posts. That increased to 16,000 for the high schools and 14,000 for the middle schools. Also, for the first time ever in district history, the Instagram average was higher than the Facebook average. OCS gained 181 followers in October, giving the district 23,884 followers on social media. In addition, the OCS newsletter was opened 10,833 times at a rate of 71%. The industry average for education is 37%. We're so appreciative of the parents, students, community members, businesses, and media outlets that follow and engage with OCS social media's accounts. The second item of information is the October Highlights Video.
Thank you, Oconee County. Go Dragons!
Thank you, Oconee County. Go Titans!
Thank you, Oconee County. Go Eagles!
Thank you, Oconee County, and go Braves!
Thank you, Oconee County. Go Rockets!
Thank you, Oconee County, and go Bulls!
Thank you, Oconee County, and go Chiefs!
Thank you, Oconee County, and go Little Chiefs!
Thank you, Oconee County, and go Hawks!
Thank you, Oconee County, and go Mustangs!
Thank you, Oconee County, and go Warriors!
Thank you, Oconee County, and go Knights! And that concludes Communications, unless you have any questions from me.
I have a quick comment. I just want to first thank the voters for supporting the EastBloss because, you know, that shows the investment and the intentionality behind supporting our schools in Oconee. But I also want to take a moment to thank you, and Peter, and Dr. Butler, and Dr. Harden, and everybody who put so much work into getting the word out about the campaign because, you know, there's a lot of voter education, there was a lot of transparency about how the funds will be spent, and I think the results of that was seen on election. that was seen on election night. So, a big thank you to all of you for that. That was special. Thank you.
It was a great team effort.
Have anybody signed up to speak tonight?
No one has signed up to speak this evening.
All right. Move on to action items. Dr. Butler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If it pleases the Board, we can take Items A and B together as they are both out-of-state field trips, and we would recommend those trips to be approved as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Butler. Need a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Hammack?
Second.
Ms. Parrish, all in favor? Passes 5-0.
Item C is Board Policy, JCDAF, the Use of Electronic Devices by Students. We would recommend removing this policy from the table for public review and approving it as presented.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Hammack, Mr. Tool, all in favor? Passes 5-0.
Item D is the Technology Surplus List. We would recommend this list to be approved as presented.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Ms. Parrish?
Second.
Mr. Tool, all in favor? Passes 5-0.
Item E is the Transportation Camera System. We would recommend the purchase of the cellular camera system from Rush Truck Centers for $191,188.60. This project will be funded through EastBloss and the general fund.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Hammack?
Second.
Mr. Tool, all in favor? Passes 5-0.
And finally, Item F is the Election Results Resolution. We recommend that the Board certify the 2025 election results as presented.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Hammack?
Second.
Mr. Hammond, all in favor? Passes 5-0. We do have a need to discuss personnel and need a motion to enter executive session.
I will make a motion that the Board will adjourn to executive session to discuss or deliberate upon personnel matters as described on the affidavit to be attached to the minutes.
Ms. Parrish?
Second.
Mr. Hammond, all in favor? Passes 5-0. We are adjourned.